Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for the County of Sacramento on March 14th, 2022. Lydia, will you go ahead and call the role?
Absolutely. Commissioners Boja.
Here. Happy Pi Day.
Thank you. Raythal?
Here.
Sabaniano?
Here.
Tati Chi?
Here.
And Wong?
Here.
And we do have a call.
Thank you, Lydia. Will you go ahead and read the procedures for the online meetings this evening?
I sure will. This meeting is live streamed and temporarily closed to in-person public participation. The Clerk's office is in the process of hosting hybrid public meetings that will provide board members and members of the public with the option to participate in the meeting either in person or remotely. Thank you for your patience and support. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Please feel free to send your email comments to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
Excellent. If you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are ready to move on to item number one, but I just want to check in with the clerk real quick. I know we need to welcome Commissioner Sabaniano. Do we need to swear her in or anything before we get started?
No, sir, we don't.
Excellent. Well, welcome to the County Planning Commission. We appreciate you serving.
Thank you.
And you go ahead and call item number one this evening.
Item number one is for General Plan Amendment. And let's see here, the project is a safety element background amendment. The environmental document is exempt. And let's see, Young Choi, are you ready to present, or will Mr. Smith, Todd Smith, be presenting for you?
I'll be presenting tonight. Thank you. Should I start now?
Yes, that'd be great.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Young Choi with Planning and Environmental Review. Today, I'll be presenting our General Plan Amendment to the Safety Element Background Document. Next slide. So today's request is for a General Plan Amendment to amend the Safety Element Document Document to incorporate text required by the state related to the local hazard mitigation plan and to update our outdated hyperlinks. Next slide, please. To give you a bit of the background, this was initiated by the Assembly Bill 2140 that requires that FEMA approved a local hazard mitigation plan to be adopted as part of the safety element of the jurisdiction's general plan. On September 26th of 2017, County's General Plan was amended amended to incorporate the LHMP by reference to comply with the requirement of AB 2140. And on February 15th of 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved the county's 2021 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this proposed amendment is to ensure that the county's compliance with AB 2140, including the language that was requested by Governor's Office of Emergency Services, and to update hyperlinks that was referenced in the Safety Element Background Document. Next slide, please. So I'll be going over the proposed amendment. So the very first amendment that we see on page 12 is generally a minor clarification and deletion of the old LHMP link. There was a bit of a typo, and to clarify the language for item number one. Amendment number two through four is updating our hyperlinks that no longer works. And item number five is to delete unnecessary 2016 LHMP hyperlink. Next slide, please. And this table number six includes the language that were requested by the Governor's Office. So we've included the language as well as the most up-to-date 2021 version of our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Next slide, please. So the proposed amendment to the Safety Element Background Document are proposed in the response to the adoption of the local hazard mitigation plan. Local hazard mitigation plan will be restated and compliant with the requirement of the Assembly Bill 2140.
Young, I'm gonna stop you for just a second. If we could get everybody that's not presenting right now to go on mute, that would make it a lot easier to hear.
Okay. I will repeat the conclusion slide one more time so that we all understand. So the proposed amendment to the Safety Element Background Document is response to the adoption of our latest 2020 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. And this proposed amendment will ensure that the county's adopted Local Hazard Mitigation Plan is referenced and compliance with the requirement. As mentioned, another part of the amendment is to update our outdated hyperlinks. And finally, there are no new policies that are proposed as part of this amendment, and this will not impact internal consistency with our other elements of the general plan. Next slide, please. So it's the staff recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend to the board to recognize the exempt status of the request under section 15061B3 of the CEQA. And the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to recommend that Board of Supervisors amend the Safety Element Background Document to the Sacramento County General Plan, subject to the findings listed in this staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions that your commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Young. I'll open it up to Commissioners. Any questions for staff this evening? All right, hearing done, we'll go ahead and move forward to public comment. We'll open up the public comment period. Lydia, do we have anyone online to comment on this item?
And there are no public commenters in queue. Shall I close it or leave it open?
Yes, we'll go ahead and close public testimony.
Item is closed.
Excellent. Commissioners, any discussion or motion?
This is Commissioner Tati Chi. I'd move staff recommendations.
And do I have a second?
Boja, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any comments, Commissioners, before I call for a vote? All right, hearing done. Lydia, go ahead and call the role.
Commissioners Boja?
Here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sabaniano?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And the motion for staff recommendation carries.
Thank you. If you go ahead and call item number two.
Item number two is General Plan Annual Report, and the environmental document, it's not applicable.
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Smith, Principal Planner for the Planning and Environmental Review Division, here tonight to give you the 2030 General Plan Annual Report for last calendar year, 2021. Next slide, please. And so for those of you who haven't been through this before, we generally just go over the major projects and programs related to general plan implementation this time every year. Excuse me. For 2021, we continued implementation and stakeholder outreach on the county's environmental justice element. There is an attachment to the staff report package that includes the Environmental Justice Element 2021 Report Card that documents how various measures in the EJ element are being implemented. Secondly, the Climate Action Plan, we've made some significant progress on development of this plan, releasing the first two drafts in March and September 2021, back to the Planning Commission hearing in October 21, 2021. And then we are currently working through some revisions that will be presented to the Board of Supervisors in a workshop next week, in fact. And then on the housing elements implementation, next slide, please. So the 2021 to 29 Housing Element Update was adopted by the board in July of last year. In fact, last week, we finished working on those revisions in collaboration with the state Housing and Community Development Department, as well as Sacramento Housing Alliance, and the board last week approved again the Housing Element Update, and we have resubmitted that to HCD for their certification. The Housing Element Update includes the different regional housing needs allocations for the county, which are in a table in the couple of slides here. As it relates to SB 2, Senate Bill 2, the county staff have been working on the rezone program for moving forward with outreach with that in the next couple of weeks. And then staff is also working on amendments to the general plan, the zoning code, and design guidelines that would facilitate housing development. Next slide, please. So the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, this is cycle five, so 2013 to 2021, and this shows what our production was as a county, the various income levels. So the far left column is the income levels, very low, all the way to above moderate. And then the total production is that second column from the right, total of 5,194 units across the four income categories. And next slide, please. Cycle six, you see, which is the current cycle, you see a big jump. We went from about 13,800 total Rita to 21,272. So this is because Sacramento County is a large metropolitan county, and based on projections of population growth, we get this allocation. We've got our work cut out for us. We've got year one totals here on this slide, and we look forward to reporting more in the coming years as we implement the housing element. Next slide, please. So as it relates to implementation measures, this is something, again, that we do every year. We pick one or two of the elements and report on implementation progress. In years past, we've done the land use element, the safety element, conservation element, and the agricultural element. This year, we focused on the circulation element, and so the green bars represent completeness. The yellow bars are some progress has been made or they're ongoing. Then the red ones mean no progress, and usually that's an indicator that either some modifications need to be done to the individual implementation measures, or they're no longer appropriate, just based on the age of the general plan. And so that kind of gets to the issues on this slide. The general plan was last comprehensively updated in 1993, and so that becomes kind of an issue as we work on implementation now in 2022. Obviously, planning practices, best practices have changed over the last couple of decades. In addition, there are a fair amount of policies and implementation measures in the general plan that can be kind of difficult to wade through. And so that contributes to kind of the lack of knowledge or awareness, particularly as new staff come on board. We have a lot of, not just in the Planning and Environmental Review Division, but other departments as well, because all the departments of the county have some responsibility for implementing the general plan. And so we are actively looking to scope a general plan update in the next couple of years, but for now, we're reporting on what we've got. Next slide, please. So the general plan has three main growth strategies that define how the county is intended to grow over time with with population growth. The first strategy is the infill strategy that is really about making the best uses of vacant and underutilized properties and revitalizing commercial corridors. Some examples of that include the recently approved ReEnvision West Garden Arcade Plan, which was primarily around transportation, but a little bit of kind of vision setting as it relates to the adjacent land uses on some transportation corridors. Second example is Green Means Go, which is a pilot program that the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SACOG, was recently awarded $34 million in funding for. So staff is actively engaged in identifying specific locations within the five Sacramento County green zones where we can invest some of that $34 million to go towards infrastructure improvements that would help incentivize infill development. Another example is along Stockton Boulevard, which coincidentally is in one of those green zones. This is where the county has a special planning area. The city of Sacramento has a proposal for a specific plan that goes the length of the corridor, and so we're looking to partner with the city staff on this to make sure that we have a comprehensive and consistent look at the land uses and the transportation modes in that corridor. And then finally, another example of infill, we have an infill program that has been funded through the local early action planning grant program, and we are actively working on that to identify any regulatory barriers or identify any additional incentives that we can bring to bear to produce more housing in infill areas. Second, growth strategy in the general plan is build out of approved growth areas, and there's about 53,700 units in those approved growth areas, going back probably two decades or so. A recent example of work here is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan. The board in April of 2021 directed staff to pursue some work on the transportation infrastructure triggers, and so we're collaborating with our partners in the Department of Transportation to revise those transportation triggers and bring that back to the CPAC in the Vineyard area, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Supervisors for eventual adoption. You'll be seeing that later this year. The intent of that is to help facilitate additional housing in the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan area that was approved about 20 years ago, roughly. And then finally, the third growth strategy is pending master plans, and we have about 55,000 units in those pending master plans. Next slide, please. The approved growth areas are all listed here, and you can kind of get a sense of their low and medium and high-density allocations with each plan area. So we're, again, looking at about 48,500 approved units within all of these, and then about 5,100 units or 5,200 if you take in Rancho Marietta, which is a community out east on Highway 16 or State Route 16. Next slide, please. So the pending master plans are the ones that we are still going through the entitlement process with each one of these applicant groups. And they're really in two distinct geographic areas in the county. So the Jackson Highway Corridor, we have Jackson Township, which has about 5,600 units, and then the West Jackson Highway Master Plan has about 16,600 units. Both of those are obviously going through the entitlement process. We are preparing all the necessary technical studies and EIRs. Jackson Township, those of you on the commission may recall, was approved by the Planning Commission in December or recommended for approval. Next steps there are to take it to the Board of Supervisors sometime this calendar year. The other geographic area where we have pending master plans is up in Natomas, where there's been a lengthy history. The Natomas Joint Vision was a process where the city of Sacramento and the county were interested in the development potential in Natomas in general. The two projects here, Grand Park Specific Plan and Upper West Side Specific Plan are both pending. They are applications for growth through the county as opposed to the city. And their respective unit counts are here on the screen or on the slide. They also include, and this is true of Jackson Township and West Jackson as well, they also include a fair amount of non-residential, the parks, the schools, the open space, the commercial and office, the employment land uses, as it were. So it's a balanced approach to growth. All told, these are about 55,500 units between the remaining four. Next slide, please. So our work program for this coming year played out here on the screen. For this next year, we want to continue with the Environmental Justice Element Implementation Program. We've got a commitment to do that on an annual basis. We are hoping to complete work on the Communitywide Climate Action Plan this year as well. The Local Early Action Planning Grant, that's again related to infill development. That work will be ongoing. We also have some work to do on implementation of the Housing Element Update and completion of the SB 2 Planning Grant. The Housing Trust Fund work is related to an ordinance of the counties that requires an affordable housing fee for non-residential development. So we've got some work to do there related to indexing that fee, and so we're actively working on that right now. The North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Amendment, which I mentioned previously, we hope to be bringing that back to the CPAC and Planning Commission in the next several months. And then the infill program, ongoing work with that, and hopefully we can make any necessary changes to the codes or policies of the county that incentivize infill. The Quimby Act, this has to do with a provision of county code that states that the planning director will update the land dedication factors for the various park districts in the county, and this happens according to the ordinance after every federal census, and so we're beginning that work now in coordination with the county's Special Districts Group, which works with all the park districts on their respective fee programs. And then finally, we hope to begin scoping of a comprehensive general plan update later this year. That'll be a multi-year process. It's certainly no small undertaking. It will take extensive staff work and budget. But these are the main priorities for the long-range planning team for this coming year. Next slide, please. And so this is an informational item. There's no action required of the Planning Commission. We will be taking this to the Board of Supervisors next week, and they typically receive and file this 2021 Annual Report and provide direction to the staff that we submit this annual report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, as well as the Department of Housing and Community Development. And then the board typically directs staff to proceed with implementation of the general plan, and that includes those projects that are outlined in the work program. And I believe that is the last slide, so if... Yeah, it is. So I am available for any questions of the planning commissioners?
Thanks, Todd. I appreciate the presentation this evening. Go ahead and open it up to the Commissioners for questions.
I have a question. I'm not sure how to raise my hand.
Go ahead.
I just, just a question on the reports that have to be filed or this report that has to be filed. Is there any feedback anticipated, or is it just kind of, yeah, receive and file by the state?
By the state, it's usually a receive and file put on an annual basis to document that we are in compliance with our Housing Element Law, Day-Telling Element Law. And that shows to HCD that we are making meaningful progress on the programs that are identified in the Housing Element. There's also a much more detailed attachment that I didn't go over in the PowerPoint, but it documents all the various types of building permits that the county is issuing by income level that ultimately feed into those tables that were in one of those slides on the units by income type or income level, but it's typically a receive and file.
Thank you. And then just one more question. In the housing element, there in the report, it mentions that only 24 out of the 539 jurisdictions in the state are meeting the RENA numbers. So I'm just curious, in terms of the staff level, do you all look at what some of those other jurisdictions are doing that might help influence or help Sacramento County meet or get closer to meeting those numbers?
We do. We, a couple of different ways, actually. One of those ways is through the development of the Housing Element itself. So we look at what other jurisdictions are doing to see if there's a more effective program or a structure that will work Sacramento County. The other way that we try to learn from our partners in other jurisdictions is trying to figure out place to incentives or the, in particular, fee issues can be a complicated thing. We hear from the development community all the time about, you know, fees being too high or excessive. And so we're kind of walking a fine line there. Obviously, we need collect fees, impact fees that relate to the infrastructure that's necessary to serve the projects and the amenities. But we also don't want to have such a regulatory process that's overburdening development. So we're trying to balance out, you know, the necessary fees, the necessary regulatory structure with the desire to produce more housing at all income levels. So we're, some of those programs around infill and the SB 2 work are really about the regulatory side of it. And we're always looking for ideas to improve production.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions, Todd, just because you guys took the time to update us on the progress for the circulation element. I was wondering if we could touch on a few of those action items, just so I understand kind of where we're at and whether those are being shelved or not. One of the ones with no progress was establishing a level of service for all modes of transportation. And to me, this, you know, intuitively seems like a, like a good idea is, hey, if I'm constantly stopped on my bike while I'm trying to get to work, and my level of service is pretty low, then I'm probably not going to ride my bike to work. So I was just curious, you know, doesn't look like we're moving in that direction. Obviously, we're moving away from level of service with cars, but what's the plan on that particular item?
So that one in particular is a little bit of a shifting goal, maybe not the right word, but there's this concept about level of stress. So a bike user, somebody who's riding either recreationally or to work, may be more may find it more desirable to ride in an environment that has less stress on them as a bicyclist. So that concept is taking hold in the county's pending active transportation plan, which is a combination of the existing bicycle master plan and the pedestrian master plan, but it really seeks to improve the broader county network of bicyclist and pedestrian facilities countywide, so providing more trails, more sidewalks, more connectivity that would promote an environment where a cyclist or pedestrian feels safe in using those facilities. And it's not exactly the same as a level of service, the traditional sense, but it's a similar sort of metric.
That makes sense. Thank you for that information. The other one I just wanted to touch on briefly is the development of additional access and parking sites along River Road. um, development of additional access and parking sites along River Road. Great amenity for all of our residents, and since we've taken the time to update the metrics, I figured I'll ask you a few.
Sure, yeah. So that one, um, I could probably report back on, uh, that might be in the OT's world, uh, our county department of transportation, depending on what the site-specific um, circumstances might be on a Long River Road, uh, may or may not be feasible, but we can certainly look into that one.
Yeah, it says regional parks. It's um, circulation uh, element twenty-one. Perfect. Those are, those were the two that were close to my heart, so I figured I'd ask about them, so uh, I'll open it up to questions from other commissioners.
Todd, this is Joe Phil. What is the guidelines right now for Saeco's Green Means Co. with the thirty-eight million? Does that mean that we're still going to be competing in the six-county mega-region by Saeco?
That is my understanding at this point. Um, there was a a recent webinar about two weeks ago uh, that emphasized that this is uh, not transportation-related funding, but other infra- um, infrastructure that's necessary to incentivize infill. Um, but my understanding, it is, it is a six-county region uh, competitive program based on what that webinar said.
And then when can we, when do you all anticipate on applying for those? And is there an opportunity for Fermilake funds for that, or is it just all competitive?
Um, my understanding is that it's, at this point, all competitive. Um, we are actually working on developing a list of of potential locations that we think would be most competitive. Um, we do plan on applying uh, by the deadline, which escapes me at the moment what that date is exactly, but we do plan on applying.
Okay, thank you. And then for the annual report um, itself, does staff recommend any changes, whether it's streamlining internal policies or perhaps highlighting challenges that are otherwise preventing developers or other interested parties and hopefully getting us to the RINA numbers?
In terms of the, the body of the annual report or other mechanisms, is that your question?
Yeah, yeah. Are there any recommendations um, internally, maybe by staff to the Board of Supervisors to say, hey, this is what we're seeing, and this is how we could potentially?
Yes. So there's a couple of different ways we do that. One would be um, activities already in progress, like the SB two uh, planning grant where tackling uh, some provisions of the zoning code, which um, has to be consistent with the general plan, obviously, but uh, another way is through the LEAP infill program that we're actively working on, and we expect there to be some recommendations out of that, whether it's, you know, policy or implementation measure changes or uh, other programs that the county might wish to entertain to actually facilitate some of the the achievements that we are going to be challenging from a RINA perspective. Yeah, we we have a a number of mechanisms to report back and make recommendations to the board.
Okay, thank you.
I think you muted Commissioner Raffel.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Any other, I, any other questions for staff this evening, commissioners? All right, since this is an informational item, do we need to open up for public comment this evening?
And there are no public comments.
All right, we'll go ahead and open and uh, and then close public comment.
Public comments are closed for item number two as well.
All right. And so we have no action on this item tonight. And we'll go ahead and move on to item number three. If you go ahead and call the item.
And item number three is for a development plan review and special development permit um, for the Fair Oaks Water District Corporation Yard, and the um, environmental doc is that it's exempt.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Kimber Gutierrez, and I will be presenting the item tonight, which is the Fair Oaks Water District Corporation Yard renovation. Next slide, please. The project site is located at one zero three two six Fair Oaks Boulevard at the northeast corner of Winding Way and Fair Oaks Boulevard in the Fair Oaks community. The project site consists of two parcels, which are currently developed with structures and paved areas to support operations as the Fair Oaks Water District Corporation Yard. Next slide, please. The two parcels are within the commercial district in the Fair Oaks Village Special Planning Area. The surrounding area consists of a range of existing single-family residential neighborhoods and commercial uses. The Fair Oaks Water District Administrative Office is located directly across Fair Oaks Boulevard to the south of the project site. Excellent, please. You, um, the structures on site appear to have been constructed during the nineteen thirties when the site was used as a lumberyard. The Fair Oaks Water District purchased and relocated to the site in nineteen seventy-nine, and in nineteen ninety-one, a development plan review for a new storage building was approved. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting
Okay.
The applicant is requesting a development plan review and a special development permit. Um, the development plan review is to allow the renovation of the existing Fair Oaks Water District Corporation Yard, including tree removal. The renovation requires deviations from the special planning area standards, as it would result in the annex structure, carport and car wash bays, and trash enclosure located approximately eight feet from the adjacent existing residential uses to the north. Um, the special development permit is to allow deviations to the Sacramento County zoning code. Um, the deviations include um, the commercial fences section of our code for front and side street yards, as well as our fence requirement adjacent to residential zones, as well as trash enclosure screening requirements. So for the commercial fencing, the front and side street yards, um, fences are not permitted, except that open ornamental fences such as wrought iron are permitted on the property line along a public right-of-way. Um, the proposal is to do an eight-foot-tall wall um, along the portions of the public right-of-way behind sidewalks and required landscaping. Um, for the adjacency to residential zones, our code requires a masonry wall of at least six feet in height to be provided along the interior property lines um, to buffer commercial and industrial uses from residential zoning districts. The project, as proposed, would keep the existing four foot, four-point-five-foot-tall retaining wall with a six-foot-tall wooden fence on top along the shared property line with the existing residential zones to the north. And then the last deviation is for the trash enclosure screening requirements. Ours code requires a five-foot-wide landscape planner around the perimeter of the trash enclosure, and as proposed, the trash enclosure would not contain perimeter landscaping. Next slide, please. Here is the site plan. Um, the renovation involves demolishing the existing structures and constructing new structures and site improvements. So new structures proposed include a sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety square foot, um, thirty-foot-tall main building, a one thousand six hundred and eighty square foot, twenty-three-foot-tall annex structure for record re- retention, um, twenty-three-foot-tall covered carports and car wash um, bays, hazardous storage shed, and a trash enclosure. Um, kind of located um, to the west of the proposed structure is an enclosed courtyard um, and would feature a pond, landscaping, and seating area. The courtyard is proposed to be completely enclosed by an eight-foot-tall wall along the project frontage. The existing driveways on Fair Oaks Boulevard and Winding Way would be maintained. Both existing driveways are currently gated with chain link and are proposed to remain gated with the proposed project. Parking on site is provided for Fair Oaks Water District vehicles and equipment with twenty-nine parking spaces to be provided on-site for employee and customer parking. So a total of eighteen parking spaces are dedicated for employee parking within the gated area of the site, and then and eleven parking spaces are provided for customer parking and are located outside of the gate um, at the Fair Oaks Boulevard driveway. Um, the, there are also um, two bicycle parking spaces for short-term bicycle parking um, at the northeast corner of the site by the records retention structure. Um, and the applicant has indicated that the eleven customer parking spaces will be available to the public outside of the regular hours of the Fair Oaks Water District, and up to twenty-four parking spaces will be available to the public during weekend community events. Um, and I will discuss this a little bit later, but this did come up at the CPAC meeting um, as a request. Um, operations and activities at the Corporation Yard are not anticipated to change or increase substantially due to the renovation. Um, and existing activities include office work, deliveries, training, storage of plumbing-related materials and files, dispatching crews, movement, and removal of site materials. Um, also, the equipment and material storage would become, would be covered and located along the western and northern perimeters of the project site. Next slide, please. Here is the landscape plan. Um, there are thirteen existing trees, twelve ornamental pear, and one coast redwood along the project site's frontage with Fair Oaks Boulevard and Winding Way. These are all proposed to be removed. Um, and in their place, the proposed project includes four thousand seven hundred square feet of irrigated landscaping and would consist of fifteen new trees. The existing single-family residential and commercial uses about the project site to the north and east. Um, and an existing uh, four-and-a-half-foot-tall retain wall and six-foot-tall wooden fence on top is located along that shared property line um, as discussed for the special development permit deviation. Um, and then along the majority of the eastern property line adjacent to other commercial uses, a new six-foot-tall wooden fence um, is proposed to be installed. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides are just the building elevations. Um, so I'll go through these fairly quickly. Next slide, please. But the structures are designed um, to complement the Spanish Revival architecture um, of the Fair Oaks Water District Administration Building, which is across Fair Oaks Boulevard to the south. Next slide, please. Here is the um, record retention building, and then also the trash enclosure and hazardous storage. Next slide, please. And these are the um, carports uh, and as well as the signage and trash enclosure. Um, the carports will contain a partial panel at the rear, and the materials bins will be enclosed with misters um, for dust control. Next slide, please. The project was heard by the Design Review Advisory Committee on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. While the DRAC members expressed some concern on potential noise and dust impacts in proximity to adjacent residences, they felt the architectural design of the project was refined and thought it was an improvement from the existing conditions of the site. And ultimately, the DRAC did recommend the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. Um, the project was also presented to the Fair Oaks Wa- uh, Community Planning Advisory Council, or CPAC, on two different occasions. The first was on July seventh of twenty twenty-one via teleconference. After a presentation from staff and the applicant, the CPAC members questioned and shared concern over the minimal amount of public outreach done prior to the CPAC meeting, as well as some logistics on public access to parking, um, the setback deviation and close proximity to adjacent residents, and the architectural compatibility of the buildings to the surrounding area. Um, one verbal comment was received during that meeting um, from the north-adjacent property owner, who was opposed to the proximity of the proposed accessory structures. Um, after discussion, the CPAC did vote to continue the item to a subsequent meeting to allow the applicant to conduct additional public outreach. Um, the applicant did conduct a number of different outreach um, events and um, materials. Um, and he, they did prepare a presentation summarizing the outreach done and provided the materials um, and that's also included as part of the planning commission packet. Um, in addition to the public outreach, the applicant did revise their plans to increase the material bin height. It was originally eighteen feet and is now proposed to be twenty-three feet. They also added that partial pan- panel to the rear of the carports um, and enclosed the materials bins and added misters for the dust control. So the changes that were made and the public outreach that was done was presented to the CPAC on October sixth of twenty twenty-one. Um, and one member of the public spoke on the item and communicated their appreciation for the public outreach and ongoing discussions that was done, and the CPAC ultimately voted um, to recommend the planning commission approve the proposed project. Um, I believe I did uh, review and respond to comment letter that was sent in um, by a CPAC member for when this project was originally supposed to go before the planning commission on February fourteenth. Um, and they did share concerns about the amount of outreach conducted um, as well as the design of the project. I did summarize the information that I just shared with you all now um, in a response to that um, comment letter. Next slide, please. Um, through staff's analysis, uh, the project could be found consistent with the general plan, community plan, Fair Oaks Village SPA, and the zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses as it is an existing use, and the proposed renovation would be improving existing conditions on the site. And there are no significant environmental concerns. Next slide. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed project and recommends the planning commission take the following actions um, on the screen, which is to recognize the exempt status of the request, um, approve the development plan review, find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, and approve the special development permit subject to findings and conditions. Um, and with that, I will conclude staff's presentation and can answer any questions.
Thank you, Kimber. I appreciate your presentation this evening. Commissioners, uh, any questions for staff this evening? All right, hearing none. Uh, do we have a statement from the applicant, or do the applicant like to make any presentation this evening?
Hello, this is Mara Gutierrez from Gutierrez Associates. Um, thank you, everyone, for listening.
With the clerk of the board's office, we'd like to get you sworn in, please.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Hi there. Um, so um, please prepare to be sworn, and raise your right hand, and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do so affirm.
I do.
Okay, and prior to making your statement, if you would, please restate your name and make the statement that I have been sworn.
Uh, I am Mara Gutierrez, and I have been sworn.
Thank you so much. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, we have prepared a a couple of things to say regarding the project, but Kimber did such a great presentation. I think it might be a little um, bit of redundancy. Um, so we're here to answer any questions that you have for us. Um, and we appreciate everyone taking time this evening to see our project.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, commissioners, any questions for the applicant this evening? All right, uh, I just have one then. Um, have you read through the conditions of approval, and are you in agreement with those conditions?
Yes, we are in a, in agreement with the conditions.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we'll go ahead and uh, open up public comment. Eddie, do we have anyone on the line this evening that wants to address the commission?
And no, there are no public commenters on the line.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment.
And public comments are closed for item number three on this evening's agenda.
All right, commissioners, discussion or emotion?
This is Commissioner Tati. She I would move staff recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Tati. Do I have a second this evening?
Commissioner Borja, I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second uh, for staff recommendation. Uh, any other comments before I call for a vote, commissioners? Other discussion? All right, Lydia, if you'll go ahead and call the roll.
Absolutely. Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Rethel?
Yes.
Davignano?
Yes.
Tatiishi?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number four this evening, which is the planning director's report.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Pahuli, principal planner. I do have a few updates for you this evening. The first is wanted to note that last week at the board of supervisors, the board took action on the first round general plan items. Todd mentioned that during his presentation, mentioned that the housing element was approved by the board last week. That was one of the actions that they took. In addition to the circulation and land use updates for other jurisdictions. The third item that was part of that first round package was the Hickory Hanks Project, the federal plan amendment rezone. And use permit amendment that some of you may remember. Did want to note that as part of that discussion, board members brought up the. Desire to have a prioritization discussion about future zoning code updates. So that is a package that staff is working on. Bringing before the board of supervisors in the next few months. To have a conversation about prioritization of future code amendments. So that we can get on the same page with the board's priority projects. The second item that I wanted to mention was that we have some items coming up at the board in the next couple of months. The first is the CMO Circle. Community Plan Amendment Rezone and Use Permit that was considered by the planning commission last month. That item was recommended for approval five zero by the planning commission. We're coming up next week on three twenty-two to the board for consideration of that item. And then I also wanted to mention the mosaic law use permit that was reviewed by the planning commission. I mentioned that. That action of the planning commission to approve that use permit amendment on a four-to-one vote was appealed by neighbors. That item is scheduled to go before the board on April twenty-sixth. So we. Will have that hearing in front of the board on the appeal. The consideration of that use permit amendment will be de novo, meaning that the board will be able to. Consider the entirety of that item when it is heard before them. So those were the updates that I had on projects. I did also want to mention, and this could be a. Tag-team item perhaps with the clerk of the board's office, but we are beginning the process to move back to in-person meetings and hearings. Beginning in April, we will be conducting the Community Planning Advisory Council meetings in person back out in the community. As well as holding our subdivision review committee and our zoning administrator hearings in person. In addition to that, that also means our planning commission meetings will be moving back to in-person beginning on April. Looking at the calendar, April eleventh would be the first planning commission meeting where we would be back in person for that hearing. So. Wanted to note that for all of you, we do have one meeting in between there. There is a March twenty-eighth meeting that we do have one item. So we will have that meeting conducted via. Blue Jeans, just like this meeting, but again, on April eleventh, we would be moving back to in-person. So wanted to note that for the planning commission and perhaps there's some discussion around that. Or perhaps even something to be added by the clerk of the board's office on that.
Hi, this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office. And what I would add is that the clerk of the board, we are currently assessing. Venues for the CPAC meetings and a few of the others. Some have been secured, some we are still working on moving forward on and. We will report out as soon as we make some forward motion on any of the securing any of the venues. For our boards and commissions. So stay tuned, please.
And that concludes staff's planning director's report.
Thank you, Chris. I'm excited to see everyone in person.
Chair Rethel, may I ask Mr. Pahuli one quick question?
Of course.
Mr. Pahuli, for the. The item on the mosaic law, will we be able to get a copy of the staff? Staff analysis prior to that appeal hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. Once the report package is released, I will. Send a copy to all of the planning commissioners so that you have that.
Understood. And then, yes, the. I imagine that the board of supervisors would be the final hearing body for that, for both the decision and the appeal. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And then one last question for the in-person. Will we be, there's a couple of us that were appointed during COVID. Will we have some housekeeping? Instructions or do we just show up in person at the board of supervisors or at the board room?
That's a great question. I'll work with the clerk of the board's office and we'll get some information over to you, some housekeeping items, as you put it.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, do we have anything for miscellaneous scheduling matters or were those all handled?
This is Commissioner. I need to, yeah, for scheduling matters, I will not be available on March twenty-eighth for that meeting, so just a heads up that I will not be able to join.
Thank you, Commissioner Tatiishi. We make note of it.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on miscellaneous scheduling matters? All right, Lydia, any other public comments?
And there are no further public comments on any of the, on item numbers, three, four, five or six, and also none on off-agenda.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for your time this evening. I appreciate you all being here and we're going to go ahead and adjourn at six thirty-one PM. Have a nice night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.